Okay, I'll make a motion to open the meeting.
Member Wilks? Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Brewster?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, welcome everybody. It's July 24th at 7:40 PM or 6:40 PM. I apologize for opening about 10 minutes late. We were having a consultation with our attorney. But we'll begin the meeting shortly. The plan for tonight is the agenda item is applications from the fire district. And the order in which I believe we have to consider them is there's an application for an area variance which we have to consider first. There is an application for subdivision review which I believe we have to consider second. And there is an application for site plan review which we have to consider third. The public hearing is in fact open. And if anyone is online or wants to come into village hall and provide comments for us to consider, we will open it up for public comments to anyone who has anything they would like to speak. That said, the other thing to get out of the way is conflicts of interest. Does anyone have any conflicts of interest to disclose?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I also do not.
I do not. Okay, let's go ahead and get right into the fire district application. Did you guys have anything you want to add and respond to any new information you want to add? You gave a great presentation at our last meeting. I wanted to thank you for that. You're earnest about what you're doing, your plans, and I appreciated hearing a lot of the information you put together in there. The history was fascinating. All of that was good stuff. So I wanted to thank you for all of that. That was very helpful.
Thank you. Since our last meeting, I think you're where we did appear before, the Historic Preservation Commission.
Yeah.
That's the only new news that we can't say so last meeting. You may actually approve both portions of their approvals as part of the applications.
Okay. So we listened to you guys and the application, I think as was stated in the last meeting, this is atypical for us. But I wanted to get some housekeeping stuff out of the way. So first of all, the environmental review. My suggestion is where we should end up with this is to call this a type 2 action noting that this is a lot line adjustment because the number of parcels is not changing. Lot line adjustments are a type 2 action on the type 2 list. The modification to the parking lot that they're doing is under 4,000 square feet and construction under 4,000 square feet is also on the type 2 list. And then there's some minor remodeling and repairs which is also on the seeker type 2 list. So I'm going to make a recommendation that we adopt that. Does anyone have any other comments to share?
Is that a motion? Or a...
Should we make it as a motion or should we...
Yeah, you can make it as a motion. The only thing that if I may add is that to the extent that there might be any inconsistency between the village's type 1 list and seeker, that the seeker law applies and overrides the village law. And that's in Village Code 178, H2.8A.
Okay, thank you, Mindy. Okay, well also I'll move to declare this a type 2 action in the seeker.
I'll second.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Brewster?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, some other procedural stuff. I took a look at whether this needs to go to county planning. And again, their concern is if new lots are being created off a state highway, which is not the case here. So it looks like this is exempt from county planning review is, I believe that was Steve's opinion as well, the building inspector's opinion as well. So I just want to mention that. So those are two of the procedural items. That said, we have the public hearing open. Let's go ahead and turn this over to the public. If anyone would like to make any comments, if they're online, you can click the raise hand button and go ahead and speak any comments you may have.
We don't have any participants right now.
No participants online. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Okay, next, we have a large copy of the drawings in front of us. So there is two comments we had last time. One was about parking and the other was about the dumpster. I'm looking in these plans and the lot line that they show, they have a dumpster enclosure right behind the bank and the lot line goes around there. So it looks like there's no concerns about trash, even if you sell the bank property, they would still have access to trash. Do you agree with that?
Obviously, I would think that any reasonable sales contract is going to have a condition that they get village zoning approval of whatever capital plated use they have. And at that point, we can deal with whatever capital plated use will be there. Again, we're not concerned if we need to provide additional space for a dumpster. We will, at this point, we have no planned use and don't have any idea. But at that point, if we need to deal with it, we will. I assume you're going to have a sale or what happens in that building.
Well, if they're constructing something, it would come back to us. If they're not constructing something, it doesn't come back to us.
Just because you're not on camera, can you just say who's speaking and answer the question?
Oh, my name is Jerry Losk, Fire Commissioner of District Fire District, Paul Shackle from District Fire District, we're also here, just for the record. And there's certainly space for trash. The bank used garbage cans, the typical dose that were stored in that area. So again, is any use similar to the bank of the fire district, there is no dumpster. We have a series of what I would say typical garbage cans. So as far as any use that we have capital plated potentially in the building for the use of drop, that's certainly adequate space for trash. If there's another use we have to deal with it, we'll deal with it at that point. But there is no other capital plated use.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments from anybody? Important to discussion or we can just jump into talking about findings, one application at a time?
Should we close the public hearing?
We ready to do that? Can do it either before or after discussing findings. Yes, doesn't matter.
We should certainly do it before we vote, but I don't mind leaving it open while we discuss and then just give folks one last chance to...
If someone wants to comment, anytime they can click the raise hand button. Okay, so we have...
This one passes down.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So I've lived in big cities and they had, in addition to...
I'm sorry, I cut you off.
Sorry?
Sorry, number one.
So in addition to, you know, the one most possible fire trucks, they have shorter ones. So would that not be appropriate for little village streets and smaller fire truck? I'm just curious.
Most of our fire trucks are perfectly fine to fit in the firehouse that we have. It's that big ladder truck. And the other complication is we have a pickup truck and an aluminum trailer that sits in it with the, what affection they call the ETB that we use to rescue people from the canal trail. So that, the fire truck and the aluminum thing take up a lot of space. Again, I offered you all the opportunity to come and see it. We got out of here early, I really come on all about the long hole, the tent, to use a cliche, which is the longest, is the fire truck with the ladder. And that's 105 feet long and it needs to be a certain length to have it. And that's, we have that for the commercial buildings primarily for Nazareth and the residence halls. It needs to be tall enough to reach some of the fourth door windows, et cetera. So it has a size chassis. It is the biggest truck that the fire manufacturers make that isn't a telly. So we, so again...
But equally important to the height is also the reach of the trucks. So for us to be able to safely access most residential homes in town from the road, portion of the driveway, we could equally reach as far as we can go.
Thank you. I was just curious.
Yeah.
It's a huge truck, a small thing. So again, we're dealing with that. It's the, and again, it's the length in the firehouse that reduces the height. But the height, it has to fit under all the bridges. It's a standard sort of height. The length is, because of the way it has to have dual access and such, so that drives...
So it's almost a perfect length and kind of ladder access size for the village.
It's not ideal for the village because it's very hard. Paul and I are both drivers of that truck. Trying to get around the village, it's a big, big, big truck. It's not ideal for the village streets, but it's ideal for Monroe and the commercial corridor and the college. And certainly ideal for the residential areas around the town. And the village probably don't need, for the village homes that are relatively close, you don't need that big of it. But again, the church fire for we had, we around the roof, we needed every single bit of that ladder.
We kind of have a series of standards that we need to follow initially from NFPA that sort of dictates the makeup of some of the apparatus. We're not big fans of it either, but unfortunately, that's what they built. And that's what meets today's standards.
Okay, I'm going to suggest we just go through, start talking about these variance criteria one by one. And right before we came in, I was, I told the applicant, I'd love it if they want to give some comments on that. And the applicant said we had. And Exhibit I in the meeting packet was addressing the comments, why it complies with various criteria. So I want to give applicant here an opportunity to either give some statements in brief or if you want to read them in full, that would be great. The first one is on whether the requested variance would create an undesirable change in the neighborhood character or a detriment to nearby properties.
And as I said, again, I'll tell from the record, I haven't referred to Exhibit I. But in some, I said that the granting of the variance going to subdivision permit five foot setback will result in an undesirable change to the neighborhood or to nearby properties. The proposed subdivision will not loop, will not create any noise or vibration, will not create population density, nor create any demand on governmental services. The reduced rear setback is consistent with the rear setbacks of all the adjacent buildings in the same parking lot. You recall, the Newcombe Bank property sits, they share a common boundary, there's no setback between those properties. And fire district property goes right up to the back of the Newcombe building. Again, so we don't think it's inconsistent with neighborhood, nor would it hurt neighborhood to maintain that relatively minor setback. Two, whether the benefits sought by the advocate can be achieved by some method feasible for the advocate to pursue other than the area variance. Again, we are, as stated at the last meeting, we're seeking to create a large, single lot, tax lot municipal parking lot for use by the firefighters and the community and the businesses that are serving in the area. And if we were to make, for example, the parking lot, the boundary larger, it would just extend into the parking lot. And the problem with that is we would lose parking spots for the businesses in the community. And they really, those businesses would have no right to access the back of the parking lot because it's our property. And so again, we're maximizing the use of the community property by creating parking spots for all to use. Having a larger parking spot takes away density and creates access issues for those neighboring properties that intend to use it. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, we said it was not substantial, it's proposed by code which is consistent, greater than the neighbors, the properties surrounding it. And the net effect is a community parking lot that all of the property can be used for parking as opposed to leaving an area that's unusable for commercial purposes. And again, whether the proposed variance will have an end or setback or impact on the physical environmental conditions of neighborhood for the same reasons, again, it's consistent with the surrounding properties and it actually provides an efficient parking area for the community and firefighters and the customers and nearby businesses. And can whether the launch difficulty was self-created, which considerations should be addressed with decisions of the board, which I'll not necessarily include the granting of the area variance. We said it's not created, but it was self-created by the result of a desire to maximize the efficiency of the parking lot to be used by those as we previously described. One might say it's self-created because we want to be more efficient. But again, the lot line requirement of the 20-foot setback is, creates the hardship and makes it less extreme.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Any board discussion on those, and looking at the last two?
No.
Okay. The only thing I would add is, I think this clearly is self-created, but that doesn't preclude granting of variance. All of this situation is, subdividing the lot was completely a request that they initiated. The other thing is, I think a five-foot setback when 20 feet is required is a substantial deviation. But again, that alone doesn't necessarily prevent us from granting of variance. Are people in agreement with those? With those?
Yes.
I would agree with that.
Okay. And then the two other things, whether it's the minimum necessary to provide relief, whether it's the minimum necessary to provide relief, looking at these plans here, first of all, they do have the proposed lot line going around the trash enclosure, so dumpster, and having it, so that is included there. But the thing right on the other side of that line is a drive aisle for the parking lot. So vehicles need to drive to maneuver around in the parking lot. So it looks, at least in my opinion, is substantial change in this, moving this, say, another 10 feet or 15 feet to better comply with code, it's just going to eliminate a drive aisle that is needed to make the parking lot function. So does anyone want to, so this is what it's looking like afterwards. So we can see here, this is the drive aisle and these are the parking spaces in this writing.
Gotcha. Yeah.
You're talking about this? Right here, yeah. So if they move this lot line further this way, there's no drive aisle. Or there's less parking spots.
As I said in the last one, the area almost preserved the status quo.
Okay. Any other comments from anyone? Okay. I would like to make a motion then to close the public hearing.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were going to go.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on the area variances. And I'll make a motion, I'll add on to that. We'll just, we'll start with that.
Do you have a participant?
Wow.
Do you have a new participant?
We do have a new participant. Any member of the public want to provide any comments? Okay. All right, well, I'll leave my motion to close the public hearing for the area variances. I'll do that. Second.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Chair Brewster?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, with that, I will make a motion to approve the area variance for the reasons discussed. I mean, formally, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution amended to include the findings that were discussed.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Brewster?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so that one is resolved. The next one is, we can subdivision.
I can do that one, right?
No.
I think there are three over there. So we'll see. So some of the, not everything is filled out on this. Yeah, this is just a template. We already talked about seeker and we talked about county planning. I had a couple things to discuss about this here. First is one of the things we often take a look at with some of these things is whether they comply with the village's comprehensive plan and some of our other plans. And coming into this subdivision application, I was kind of wondering as to the property uses and how that complies with our code and vision and so on for the area. I think of it as a downtown district. I just wanted to mention that, looking at the vision for the district and things in the comprehensive plans, it doesn't call downtown or retail district. It calls for a variety of uses. So the village center business district, it says, to, one of the goals of it is to maintain and enhance the district as a location for retail businesses, offices, civic uses, services, and a mixture of other uses. So it does envision services, civic uses, municipal uses as being compatible with the vision for the district. I found essentially identical language in parts of the comprehensive plan. Let's see.
That's the one that you asked, right?
All right, I'm not sure if we're going to get into all of this. Recognizing also that this is an application for lot line adjustment and that no new lots are being created, and there is no intent to create new buildings. You may remodel buildings in the future, but the intent is not to create new buildings. Also drainage isn't changing at this time. You're not doing any major actual development on the site at this time. So looking at some of the subdivision criteria that would apply for when or new buildings are being constructed, just doesn't really make sense. I kind of think, does this fit with the vision of the district? Recognize this as a lot line adjustment with development essentially being unchanged for the time being, with the potential of some remodeling, which is consistent with our code standards as well. Is there any other findings you think we should discuss about this, Mindy, for a lot line adjustment?
I mean, the parcels already filled out, so you don't have to worry about the lot lines, lots being built in 178-75. It already has public open space. It's...
Yeah, I mean, we had some standards in 178-7, had some general standards, but if nothing is changing, there's really not much here that's applicable. So I'm just going to say that a lot of the typical subdivision review standards just doesn't seem applicable for lot line adjustments. Everyone agree?
Agreed.
So with that, I guess I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on the subdivision plans.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Chair Brewster?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, and the last one we're up to is the site plan.
You didn't make a term.
Oh, we didn't make a term. Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the subdivision plans for the reasons discussed.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Brewster?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Great.
Okay, so with the site plan, there's other criteria what we typically look at with site plans. But again, this is, you may be doing some more construction work in the future, in which case that becomes a discussion in the future possibly. But right now, again, no construction is really planned. So we've already talked about compliance with the comprehensive plan and the vision of the zoning, so we can include that in this discussion as well, and incorporate those findings. But at this time, the parking lot is being, having some minor revisions that's going to improve the parking access a little bit. But otherwise, it's really not any substantial change to anything here. So bicycle access is, pedestrian access is unchanged. Vehicle traffic and circulation is largely unchanged.
Improved.
It's going to be improved, positively improved, yep. Adequacy of off-street parking, again, that's going to be improved. Landscaping is unchanged. Sinage will be improved because I think you're not going to have like 12 signs like Bank of America had, or however many that was. They had to come in, I wasn't even getting into that. We had a long history of discussing signs of Bank of America. And the lighting is essentially staying unchanged except for removing the ATM canopy floodlights, which is probably only a good thing.
You still have the floor immediately underneath, but all the floods are off. All that remains is just more underneath the canopy. But those will go with the removal anyway, so.
The, and that's in the center of the lot, that's not in the peripherals or anything. So anyway, you're not changing utilities or sewer or water. And adequacy of trash is, as we noted, you're leaving a trash receptacle, trash storage area for the bank building should something happen with that in the future. You mentioned the fighter hall has adequate trash facilities. The former bank has trash facilities. So, and then things like snow removal plans, again, nothing's changed. I'm sure it's a big parking lot, you'll find a spot to put snow.
It would help that way to handle coordination of the firehouse in this parking lot. Because there's less room in the firehouse parking lot than there is in the bank parking lot. So to your point, correct, it would be a lot better.
Okay.
But we do have to disprove it all, which way?
So in essence, most of this stuff is not applicable, but it sounds like parking is improving, vehicle traffic may be improving, and snow removal may be improving. is improving, vehicular traffic may be improving, and snow removal may be improving.
So number five is not applicable?
Um, compatibility of proposed uses to adjacent uses.
I'd say it's compatible.
I would say it's compatible. They're not causing noise, disturbances, odors.
And what did you mention about number 10? I think you started off with that.
They're not, it's not applicable, because they're, they're not changing, um...
10 or 11?
10 or 11 are unchanged.
Okay. Is the language unchanged or is it not applicable? What is it?
I wouldn't say unchanged. Or not applicable.
Because unchanged.
Because unchanged, yeah, yeah. The fact is, is not applicable because it is not changing.
Thank you.
Okay, um, the last, uh, things here are, there's, we have some default, um, conditions of approval in here, which include approval by the Historic Preservation Board, uh, that's already been done, so it doesn't mean anything one way or the other, I don't mind leaving it in there.
I don't think you need to leave it in there, they've already approved the, the demolition and the cop, copula code.
Okay. So, and then, um, the other thing we typically have in there is the approval if, uh, it'll expire in one year if they don't obtain a building permit before the action. And that's in our code, I believe. So, I mean, you'll have, uh, whatever you're constructing in the parking lot is going to be done within a year, right?
Yeah, so we need to get a building permit, a demo?
I don't think so.
Just check with Steve, but...
Whatever Steve says.
Just whatever permits we need, how about you? I'll check with Steve in the morning.
Well, I mean, probably, he may need to issue a demo permit.
Yeah.
So maybe, um, the condition should be site plan approval shall expire if the applicant does not obtain required permits for the action within a year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any required permit.
And that's basically just to not leave approvals open indefinitely if they don't get constructed, but I'm not expecting that to be an issue here.
I expect that, that ATM things can be down, as they can be beforehand.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, all right, then, if that's what we're going to go with, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the site plan.
I'll second.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Wilt?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Chair Brista?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, and then I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving site plans for the reasons discussed. Second.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Wilt?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Brista?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. I think you are done with what your thoughts from us.
Thank you very much. I truly appreciate you, especially, uh, not having, having a busy schedule for a few days.
Well, you're, you're volunteers too, so, I'm, I'm sure you know that we tend to get, uh, have to give up our time to, uh, be public servants.
Yeah, that's true, and we appreciate it, and this will honestly, I already have the res, as I talked at the last meeting, our, uh, Peter Weisar, the district attorney, has prepared the resolutions to, uh, to prepare this house for disposition, uh, and, uh, and it has to be between 27 and 34 days after we notice the public hearing, so it has to be on a Tuesday, so we're going to try to, we're not going to do it in August when people are away, so I expect that vote will be a Tuesday in September, hopefully we can get it done in September, as we're going to get it on the market for sale, uh, and that will be a public vote, so I urge all of you as Village Inspire System residents, we need to get, uh, the approval of the residents to sell this property, uh, it's really important, so please watch for them, it'll be from 6 to 9, they're all busy, please, uh, come, again, certainly the district adopts that resolution, I expect they will.
Yeah, you have a meeting next week, correct?
Uh, August, uh, August 8th, something like, whatever that Thursday is.
All right.
The second Thursday of the month is our meeting, so, uh, maybe it's the 8th, and so again, we will get that, we'll get, we'll, we intend to adopt that resolution and get it on the schedule, so we'll try to inform everyone about when that date is, and let's get this property, we're still going to get it.
Okay. All right, and just, just so you know, um, we'll, we take a little while to get the language in these resolutions formalized, and, um, when we adopt our meeting minutes, it'll, we'll approve that and get you copies of these.
Right, and so, in terms of getting the mile hour executed, how do we, how do we do that so we can get that...
I believe you go and work with county planning, I mean, not county planning, you work with county on that, you get a mile hour made, and I believe I need to sign, you need to have a line on there that I need to sign, um, to approve the, the lot lines. Um, I think that's it, I just need to sign it. And you need signatures of other, I don't know whom, do you know off the top of your head who the other people are?
Steve needs to sign it, I think, somebody at county needs to sign it, some at G M.
I'll, I'll talk to Dave in the morning. Yeah, Dave, well, their MRB will work with you, but I'm just... We, we will get that mile hour too as ASAP. And we also have to deed that, these, uh, NUCOM, so they're, they're drafting up the deeds, we want to make sure the subdivision is, is filed before we file that deed.
Okay, makes sense.
Sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Since you mentioned there might be a little bit of a scavenger hunt, now that we know, there's going to be a Bank of America sign somewhere showing up in the village, so.
Just not all 11 of them.
Ready to dial, I will be sure to say one in. Thank, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, um, I want to adjourn pretty quick, did you have...
I, I just, I know that I emailed you about this, but technically their application had nine and 11 North Main Street, as well as eight Monroe Avenue for, uh, the site plan, do they need to be all, all those addresses on the resolution? Because that, it's those in the property.
I think they probably should, yeah.
Or, or... Everything that was in, everything that was in their application should be on the resolution, and if in doubt, I would include, be inclusive, right, but under...
Yeah, I agree.
So it's okay to, where it says applicant and address, to list all of the addresses there?
I think that would be the best thing with this, especially for both, for both the site plan and the subdivision, okay?
Yeah, I agree.
It applies to all of them.
What, what, what I usually do is I put that in the action, not in the address. The address is for the applicant. The action would, would, you would put the addresses of the involved properties in the action.
Okay.
You just list them.
So I have, actually have a graph for 8 Monroe, which is their address, but I know I'll put all of the addresses in the action.
Yes.
Yep. Yep, that's a good description for, uh, the action for the site plan that you did.
Thank you.
I had a couple questions on things. You were at the H P B meeting, right?
I am.
The five, was five Sutherland approved, that, the big garage?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I know Steve sent us plans, and they had no issues with it?
Uh, I'm sorry, I take that back, they're coming back, they want more detail about, they don't have issues with the height, so that was approved, what you guys approved, the garage height.
Okay.
Their concerns are about like siding materials and lighting and H P B stuff, but the, what the P C B approved there or anything.
Okay, I was just curious how that was going, I saw in my email the new drawings for that. And was there any other things that we recently saw that went to them? Trying to remember.
Not that I can think of, I mean, the people I didn't realize was in your guys' story until you asked about it, but that would have been the only thing.
Okay. All right, I was just curious, I was, didn't mean to get too nosy, but, um...
It's all on public, you can look on the website, it's there, yeah.
Well, asking you saves me from having to watch an hour, an hour, I'm trying to meter it out from it. Although I know Mindy says I could probably figure it out with, um, uh, Chat G P T in seconds, right?
Right, we have them, um, transcribe the meetings.
I'm, I'm using the AI Parrot now for all of my minutes.
Which one?
Uh, it's called Parrot AI, yeah, Parrot AI.
P A R R O T U?
Nice. Yeah, and I can upload the Zoom meeting, the recording, and gives me a lot of information, and as well, I can be like, what did, what did Justin say about five Sutherland?
Right.
And it'll bring it up.
Oh, that's nice.
In very...
What were the words finally, well, regarding this?
Exactly.
Those things you do a good job of, well, you put your draft in there and then, and then put it through there, and it can work on grammar and wording, and sometimes it's a bit better, sometimes not so well.
Yeah, this one's different, this one's strictly for like, more like transcription, which is helpful.
Okay.
And I can listen to the meeting like on 1.75 speed.
You don't want to slow it down?
And it's been eight hours worth of meeting minutes to like, maybe three hours, so...
Oh, that's awesome. That's amazing.
It's a huge difference.
That's great, yeah.
Yeah, so if you see anything where you're like, this is AI, you're probably lost.
And, um, do we have anything, new applications for our next meeting?
The meeting packet comes out in the morning, I'm sending it to everyone at the same time with enough notice, so if you have any questions or you want to do your workshop, I'm...
It's going to be in addition. Yeah. To the meeting, it's going to be, um, an application, a request to extend the site plan approval for 75 Monroe.
Oh, here, oh, we have one of those too.
Yes.
42, now, when is that coming?
Uh, I'd, I'd like to do it in, at the August meeting, if you can.
Okay, so am I waiting for that?
No, go ahead and do it.
Okay, all right, all right, so...
If we need to put it off, we'll put it off, it would be nice to get it on the agenda.
Yeah.
I think I can handle that, if, if it's the same materials as the last approval, I can add it to this packet.
I don't know what... It's not going to be like that, it's, it's a, um, yeah, you, it, it's just a request to extend the deadline by a year.
Okay.
Do you need language?
I, no, I don't, I don't, I don't think so, so what goes in the packet, just a notice to...
The approved, the approved site plan.
Okay.
And a notice that the, um, that will remain, uh, valid for, I think they had requested a year after, um, the filing of stipulation of discontinuance.
And we'll need, uh, the notice to go out on that.
Right, yes, okay.
So... So you said we do have new applications? Okay.
Yep, yep, all of the board members are getting the applications at the same time, moving forward, as far as the packet, 14 days before the meeting, before the, like, the same time the notices go out, so there's enough time, if you guys like to do a workshop or have any questions and you want to talk to Steve, two weeks ahead of time should be plenty of time that we're not scrambling around, and, yeah, everyone's on the same page.
Cool. That's a big improvement.
Just going to say, that's very proficient.
If you like it. I, I, we'll see if, I mean, it's, just so that we're staying ahead of things, because I've noticed at that last few meetings at least, that I'm trying to get my variance that feels like last minute, and that's not okay, so.
And all that, I keep counting them.
I was going to say, the AI is like...
Yeah, I know, I'm counting them.
Good.
Okay.
Somebody to move closer to me?
Yeah, let's, uh... Okay, sure, yeah, I, I will go ahead and make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Wilt?
Aye.
Thank you. Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Brista?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Great.